Mrs. Love.
Present.
Mr. Polakowski. Mrs. Heather Smith. Mrs. Kristi Smith. Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Here.
With the record, Mrs. Heather Smith could indicate that she might not be present this evening.
Thank you. Do we have any citizens' comments?
No.
All right. Minutes of the following board meeting.
The board is asked to minutes of the April 16 special voting discussion meeting and the April 23 2020 voting meeting and the May 14 2020 virtual discussion meeting.
Need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second. Love.
Okay. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Do we have, all right, go ahead, discussion.
Okay. This refers to the minutes of, I believe it's May 14. Mr. Patonic accused me of making false statements, and I'm going to clear the record, and we're going to do it now. I have in my hand here, and I've only been on the board for six months, 37 pages of legal stuff, legal stuff, 37 pages, about how to form school board committee meetings, 37 pages. We have no school board committee meetings. That was paralyzed. I have in this hand.
Just one, one comment, Dr. Feig. We're going to be taking care of the committees at the, at the end of the meeting. Uh, we will. Yeah, I know. We haven't done anything because of this whole mess. But we are going to, I'm going to be assigning committees at the end of the meeting, so, all right, go ahead.
Well, we have 37 pages of guidance, okay? In this hand, I have 61 pages that I received on the sale of the Russdale Building just in the last six months. This is now the third year that that building has been for sale. I got 61 pages. But I thought, well, you know, that's not fair, you know, that's only two issues. So I went through, and I have in my hand 206 pages of legal papers that I got from Dave Patonic in the first six months I was on the board. If you add in the ones for June, a total of 404 pages of legal memos, motions, whatever it is, 600, 406, 404 pages, 404 pages. And I was accused of making false statements. These are not false. This is not false. This is not false. As far as I am concerned, Mr. Patonic does not represent the taxpayer, but I do. And that's taxpayer money. 400, 404 pages, just in the last six months. I don't make false accusations, Mr. Patonic. I wasn't talking through my hat. I said, I think things are out of control, and I mean it. This is taxpayer money. So if you're going to accuse me of making false statements, bring it on, because here's 404 pages of real stuff. It isn't false statements. So I'm certainly going to vote for the minutes of that meeting, but I want the minutes in this meeting that I said there are 404 pages of stuff that I've gotten from you in six months. I was being very kind when I said three pages.
May I make a short response?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to point out that the pages that you were referring to about committees, those were prepared. The board attempted to vote on them. It did not get to a consensus because of the small number of board members who were present. I then redid them to bring back for a subsequent meeting. If my memory serves me correct, I don't think I billed for that second round. Insofar as Russdale, although I, I don't want to get into, I don't think you have time tonight to go into a detailed discussion of that. But I would like to put out that the school board changed its position more than once on this matter, and that we are now operating on a decision that was made last fall to not go forward with the process of hiring an auctioneer, but rather to pursue a, an agreement with East Tunington Township supervisors. That is being pursued. The second appraiser is to go to the property tomorrow. I cannot, I, I dispute that, you know, you can say that three years is my fault. I, I believe that the school board took into account different information, acquired additional information, and made their decisions and decided on what they thought was the best course for the school district and the community. If they change their minds, you know, I, I can't do anything about that, and I, so I, I really do dispute what you're saying.
What the rate we're going, Mr. Patonic, I'll be on the board another three and a half years. I'll be here with 2,600 pages from you.
All right. We're going to move on.
Go ahead.
That's some parts over. We're going to go ahead and have a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, Captain.
All right. All right, we're going to move on to May 2020 checklist thing.
The board is asking approved the May 2020 checklist thing.
Need a motion?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Polakowski.
And we need a second?
Second, Carson.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Beistel?
Yeah.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yeah.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
Board summary report.
Board is asked to approve the May 2020 general fund board summary report.
Mr. Beistel, we have motion.
And I need a second?
Second, love.
Is there any discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
Treasurer report.
The board is asked to approve the April 2020 treasurer's report.
Need a motion?
Motion, love.
Second, Smith.
Any discussion on this?
Beistel second.
Okay. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. Feig?
Yes.
Mrs. Love? Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yeah.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
Echols.
Board is asking to approve the payment to Echols for work provided for the high school elevator bidding process.
Need a motion?
Carson, the motion.
Second.
Second, Mr. Polakowski.
Any discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
No.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, one no, seven yes, one no, one absent.
Renewal premium breakdown for school year 2020, 2021.
The board is asked to approve the single renewal premium for school year 2020, 2021 with inferiorial mon gel.
Need a motion, please?
Beistel motion.
Second.
Michelle Williams, second.
We have any discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Beistel?
Yeah.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes, yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
PSBA membership dues renewal.
The board is asked to renew membership dues to PSBA for the 2020, 2021 school year. The cost covered standard membership, policy maintenance, administrative regulations, annual updates at a cost of $1,214.89.
Need a motion? I need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I can second.
Okay, so Jason and Jim? Any discussion on this?
Yes. I think if we're $633,774 in the hole, this is an outrageous expense, and it is a slap in the face of the taxpayers to be spending money like this on a group like this.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Kristen Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
No.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, yes, one no, one absent.
Superintendent Information.
Mrs. Rhodes, I would ask if you consider having a further executive session because I was doing the Southmoreland School District's school safety and security report for Mr. Kiefer that should be reviewed in executive session. That way he can submit it as, as a completed item, so I would ask if you consider adding this to an executive session possibly at the end of the meeting?
Yes. I think that's a good idea. I think we need to do that. So we'll have an executive session at the end of the meeting then. Hopefully it won't be, we'll be able to get through everything we need in a speedy fashion. Nothing I'm saying this stuff's not important. Don't get me wrong. I am. I think it's important, but. So, all right, is there anything else, Mr. Mashup?
Yes, ma'am. I, I extend to all school board members the PK Athletic Health and Safety Plan for our, our district. I'm asking that you please consider approving that with the caveat that remembering the fluid document, obviously things will be changing as we near actual playing time, and then we have to look at other factors involved. I would also ask that you would please designate either Mr. Croftcheck or me to be the person that could go in and make any kind of amendments to this process as we proceed. But I really would ask that you would consider the approval of the, the plan so we can get it submitted. Madam President, you would have to sign off on that.
Okay. So, do you want to go ahead and vote on that now, or are we walking this on later?
That would be your discretion, Mrs. Rhodes. I, I have another item.
Okay, go ahead. Yeah, we're going to let Vince discuss these other items, and then we'll go ahead and have a motion for that then.
Well, this Mr. Beistel, he had made a motion, he had made a mention about taking care of it now. Do we want to do that, or?
We can, and that's fine. That's fine.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, that was Kristi. We need a second?
I'll second, Carson.
Okay. Do we want to put that in some kind of a form of a motion then? Kristi, do you want to go ahead and say, you know, you made a motion, and then go ahead and continue on with that?
A motion to approve the athletic plan as stated.
Okay, that's good. So we have a motion. And we could appoint, yes, go ahead, and as part, as part of that, I guess, Kristi, you'd have to say you would, would appoint Mr. Croftcheck and, and/or Mr. Mashup to oversee that.
That's what's in the plan, right?
Mr. Croftcheck is the overseer, but I, I also just, I was yet, wanted to do a lot of work on it, so I'd just like to also be a part of that process too, if it's possible.
Yes, I think so. Are we okay with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
I want to thank Payjack also. Mr. Payjack really helped me out a lot, so I, I do think it's necessary to recognize him.
Okay. Good. All right, is there any more discussion on this? All right. We'll go ahead and have roll call then, Peggy.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
When will they begin to start practicing now that we have our plan in place?
The coaches could meet as early as tomorrow. They could start implementing things as early as tomorrow.
I think the date is the 19th in the plan.
Yes.
Good. Good.
Like to get our kids busy and getting going.
Yes. Definitely. Okay, go ahead, Vince, on your next item?
Yes, I would like to recognize that this afternoon there was a, a large gathering, a, a nice gathering of concern of faculty members, staff members, community members, and board members that attended our reopening task force conversation. I, I would like to share with the public the results of a 2020, 2021 technology survey, just so that people have an understanding possibly of the needs of our district. There were 1,383 responses. Of those 1,383 responses, there were a number of questions. Do you own an appropriate device for your student to use? 52%, 52.5%, actually, it was closer to like 74% had indicated that they had some type of electronic device. 23.9% indicated that they did not have a device for their student, which came out to about 331 students. Do you have any thoughts about the type of learning environment you might like to see this fall? 72.5% said, stated they would like to return to the traditional building. 7.5% indicated that they would be interested in enrolling in SOLO, which is our Southmoreland Online Learning Academy, which is about 104 students. 16.8% indicated that the blended school option, a combination of virtual learning and in-school learning experiences would be their preference. 1.4% indicated they would homeschool, and 1.7% indicated they would move to cyber school, which is about 24 students. Please tell us your intentions based upon the given scenarios. Schools are permitted to reopen according to past practice with no restriction. 86.8% indicated my child will attend according to schedule developed. 7.1% indicated I would request that my child continue with the current instruction delivery format. And 1.6% indicated they would seek cyber enrollment, which is 22 students. Schools are permitted to reopen, but with requirements related to social distancing, wearing of a face mask, and with limitations to student numbers, thereby requiring a modified schedule of a combination of physical attendance and distance learning. 59.5% indicated your child would attend according to the scheduled develop. 22.1% said I would request that my child continue with the current distance learning format. 9.5% indicated they would seek cyber school enrollment for their children, which is 131 students. Schools are not permitted to open. 73.2% indicated my child will attend according to the schedule developed. 16.6% indicated I will seek cyber school enrollment for my children, which is 230 students. And then earlier in the year, we had performed a Southmoreland Technology Survey of 1,512 respondents. Does your home have internet connectivity? 88.2% indicated they did. 11.8% indicated they did not, which is about 179. And, and the reason I'm, I preface this is because I would like a recommendation to the board. I, I had sent everyone a copy earlier about the CARES expenditures. We, we are bound to make an allocation to our non-public school counterparts, and I'd indicated that there. I also had listed a number, a SUNDAY system, which is for those students that might be dyslexic in reading, which could help them in that, that situation. I, we, we don't know what the learning lag is going to be for students that have experienced the situations that we're occurring, currently undergoing with the COVID shutdowns. I'm projecting for the summer of 2020, 2021, an ETSY program which, which would operate for four weeks, four hours a day with five teachers. And once again, this is purely a projection because we do not know, but it would be open to any student having any learning difficulties. We would also have to calculate busing in for that and paraprofessional support those individuals that might be needing some assistance. Speaking to Mr. Novikov, there, we have a, a large number of students, 310 students that have learning support needs. We don't know what their progress would be, but in speaking to him, he recommended that we open up the IEPs for those students, and in doing so, we would have to bring substitute teachers in for those students to, for IEP review. That comes to a total expenditures of $49,133. The, the total allotted to us by CARES was $349,311. I would strongly encourage the board to consider the leasing of 1,900 Chromebooks and $15 laptops so that we can go to one-to-one configuration for our students moving forward.
I have one question on that, Mr. Mashup.
Yes, sir.
Why, why, why is that number so high at 1,900?
We, we have 1,900 students enrolled in our district, and if we're purely going to go to a one-to-one, we should provide every kid equal opportunity. We have to provide faith, which is fair and appropriate public education, so just because you have the access to one, that does not necessarily mean at all times that you would have that access, and we, we have to be fair and consistent to all students.
So we, we, I mean, okay, I just thought that we could take like a rant, like a poll of who needed them, you know? It seems to me we're probably going to have a lot of these things sitting, and it just unfortunately we have to pay for them upfront. Because I know a lot of people use their own devices, but, okay. You got to get them, you got to buy them.
I would strongly encourage moving forward on a yearly basis that we put some type of monetary value in for curriculum refresh.
Yeah.
I agree.
Can someone please let, never mind, she's back on. Mrs. Love said she wasn't on.
Oh, okay.
That leaves $300,000 in the CARES money. Does that cover the price of all the laptops?
It does not, Dr. Feig. That would be enough front payment of $300,000 to those. And there would be a monthly leasing. Monthly leasing option for, for 24 months. It would come out to, let me find it here in my sheet. $13,823 per month for a total of $165,000, roughly.
Then $165,000 would be per year.
Yes, ma'am.
On top of the $300,000.
Yes. But it would be on years two and three. It's a three-year leasing program, so it would be for, if we paid the $300,000, that would be the first 12 payments. And then we would pick up, we would start picking up with that monthly payment on, on month 13 through 36. Mr. Marnell, are you present there?
Yes, I am.
Did I say that correctly?
Yes, you did.
If we have some kids who opt to go to cyber school, do we still have to have a Chromebook available for them?
The cyber school would provide that at our cost. We, we want to keep kids out of cyber school, Dr. Feig.
No, 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 I do too. I'm just saying that my question was, do we have to buy as many if we don't have those students here? That was my question.
Oh, I, I didn't understand that. Obviously, we don't know the numbers of kids that would be moving to the cyber schools, and I would advocate that we try as hard as possible to keep as, as all of our students into our district.
Well, that's our goal. That's our goal, Vince. I just was, I was just looking at the 1,900 number, that's all. Does that include kindergarten?
That would be K through 12.
Do, do we think that there's a need for kindergarten to have, to have a, to have the Chromebook? I mean, we're, if we're sending packets home for kids, like, I feel like in kindergarten, a more appropriate thing to do would be packets where you're tracing letters and you're cutting out on the line, and you're doing things like that versus teaching them how to actually get on and receive instruction through a Chromebook. I think that's hard. I mean, and obviously, if we didn't provide them for kindergarten in first grade, that's a significant number. I mean, obviously, the CARES money is here this year, but what happens next? $165,000. That's, that's my only concern going forward.
The only answer that I could have is purely personal experience because my granddaughter was in kindergarten this year. She i- it's great to trace and everything, but I think that personal contact with a teacher face to face. I know that any opportunity that she got to interact with her teacher and her classmates was extremely important. So I would advocate this simply from a purely experiential situation with my own granddaughter, that I think that face-to-face interaction and that it's not going to be personalized. It's never going to be unless you're face-to-face directly with that with that teacher. But I think we would want to try to place our students with our teaching staff as much as possible. And I I think providing them the means to do that allows for that interaction to take place, even though it's not in the brick and mortar and actual in person. I do believe that it does allow for that that personal, a little more personalized contact.
Mrs. Reds?
Yes.
Mr. Mash.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Wanted to point out something. Mr. Mash has a detailed resolution, which was, I believe, emailed to you. And what I wanted to point out about this was a few things. Number one, the plan is for you to authorize a specific kind of option, which Mr. Mash has described to you as being the three hundred thousand dollar down payment. And then months thirteenth through twenty four, there are monthly installments of thirteen thousand eight hundred and twenty two dollars and ninety two cents. That I'm not sure how much of this, but there there are certain numbers that Mr. Clara has to input into the electronic application. And this is meant to authorize him to do that for those numbers. Nineteen hundred Chromebooks plus fifty Latitude laptops. The actual award could be either on the twenty fifth or as late as July ninth. And that was done to allow for some kind of response time as to the application so that there would be some idea that things were going okay with that. Once you make, accept a bid, then you're getting yourself legally obligated. So this is an attempt to break that circle. There's some rather technical language halfway down about an explanation about the numbers. Mr. Marnell and I went over that. And if you do that plan, then what what it means is the principal amount that you are actually including in this is six hundred five thousand four hundred and seventy three dollars. It's being paid with a down payment of the three hundred thousand. And then you're making those other payments in the second and third, I'm sorry, in the thirteenth through thirty sixth months. Your interest costs, which I cannot annualize, I don't have the ability to do that because of the way it's structured. You would be spending over that time twenty six thousand two hundred and seventy seven dollars and eighty cents. I think Mr. Marnell looked at another one, and I can't remember which one it was. But this, because you're putting money down, in effect, saves interest. So I just wanted that to be clear. You're not purchasing tonight. You're authorizing that this is the plan that you want to go with. You want this data inputted and then come back if we're ready either on June twenty fifth or July ninth to have you actually accept the bid and award the contract.
Mr. Patonic, is it not true that if the longer we wait, there's going to be a longer lag time? I just for the board that whatever direction you decide to go, that we make that decision as soon as possible because every school district in this state is looking to do something similar to this. And if we don't, if we don't make movement on this, it's going to put our pushback date for delivery further out. And I really would advocate that we try to do this in an obedient manner.
Well, then that would be June twenty fifth.
So, Mr. Patonic, what is it that we need to do tonight? Move this along?
There's a form resolution that was emailed out that you would be voting on.
Okay.
I didn't email it out, Mr. Mash.
Okay.
Do you have that?
Yes, I believe it says at the top form of bid, would that be it?
No, it's resolution. It's resolution. I gave you the resolution to select option for Chromebooks and laptops to apply for CARES Act users funding and authorize applications. I also gave you a copy of each of the bids for a lease. So you could see all of them. And the one that Mr. Mash is recommending is the one that is Schedule D, page five of six, nineteen hundred units. And that shows that six hundred five thousand four hundred and seventy three dollar number. And I'm sorry, there is a mistake at the bottom of my page. I have six hundred and five thousand on the resolution, but it should be six oh five four seventy three. And it shows the I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong page. Okay, here we go. Six hundred five thousand four hundred and seventy three dollars is the principal amount that should be at the bottom of the page, the installment is thirteen thousand eight hundred twenty two dollars and ninety five cents. That number is correctly stated. Do you want me to read it? May I?
Yes, you go ahead. Go ahead.
All right. Whereas Southmoreland School Board recognizes the need for individual electronic devices capable of allowing both in-school and distance learning by students, whereas Southmoreland School District is eligible to receive from the Federal CARES Act users fund three hundred forty nine thousand three hundred and eleven dollars gross before the non-public schools share. I believe that's fourteen hundred dollar number or something like that. Mr. Mash could address that. Whereas bids have been invited for both an outright purchase or different lease options with the ownership transferred to the school district at the end of the lease period. And the district has received a bid of Dell Marketing LP for an outright purchase and Dell Financial Services LLC for lease options. Now therefore, on recommendation of superintendent administration as follows, number one, preamble is incorporated by reference and made a finding. Number two, the school board authorizes and directs Mr. Daniel Clara and Superintendent Vincent Mash and any other officials as may be necessary as designated by the superintendent to proceed with the application to the Pennsylvania Department of Education utilizing data from the bid of Dell Financial LLC as stated immediately below. And then it says, choose one of the types of lease as per the terms on the top of the bid page. And then appropriate number from D page should be five. The page five of six through through, well, that's the range of choices. So that's correctly stated, but the one that you're doing is stated below. Lease Dell Chromebooks, including Google license, protective case and hardware support as per the terms of the invitation to bid and bid attached here to as D, page five of six. Term, three years, down payment, three hundred thousand dollars payment. Then monthly installments beginning thirteenth month for twenty four months. And that is for thirteen thousand eight hundred twenty two dollars and ninety two cents. The principal amount is six hundred five thousand four hundred and seventy three dollars stated under total. I'm not going to read, I'll read the explanation. I already told you what it means in interest. Explanation, total column on the bid sheet is the quote, principal close quote before interest, the quote per installments close quote, when multiplied by the number of installments, twenty four, includes principal installments and the total imputed interest. And when added to the down payment is the total of payments. And the difference between that number and the number in the total column is the total interest cost, which I've stated to you. And then the motion would be the school board approves utilizing the data from above lease option for the above application for CARES Act users funding, acceptance of the bid to be voted on or before July ninth and possibly on June twenty five, depending on status of application.
Do we have any discussion on this? Any further discussion? Are we ready to move forward?
Gail, does this include service on these Chromebooks if things go wrong?
Mr. Pushkar, are you there?
It does include a manufacturer warranty. We're probably going to encounter more, if there's any problems to be dealt with, it'll probably be more damage related than manufacturer warranty, but it does come with a warranty.
Are we required to have spares then?
We're not required. I mean, we're probably going to have a little bit of a contingent amount to to provide replacements while we get something fixed. We do have an existing Chromebook fleet that is aging and we could probably swap somebody with one of those while we get something repaired.
Well, they can use the ones from before?
No, I wouldn't count on them long term.
For long term, but they can use them as, because you know, with kids, things happen.
Exactly. That's that's why we're going with the protective cases now.
In your experience, that make it better, the protective cases?
Most of the damage came, most of the problems that we had with the the earlier fleet of Chromebooks came from drops. Most of the corners and hinges were damaged whenever it hit the floor and landed on the hinge. It's like, pretty much nowadays, like, everybody has a smartphone. They always have a protective case. And I've had personal experience found that just having a protective case on a smartphone increases your likelihood of survivability by three hundred percent.
Okay, am I right by saying this is a three-year program here? This is a three-year lease?
Yes.
Okay, so in the fourth year, we would have to start all over again with another three hundred thousand or more?
That is, the technology is perishable. We're going to have to figure out some kind of refreshed plan. This is just a start.
Mr. Pushkar, what kind of difficulties? It's my understanding that we bought Chromebooks here before. I wasn't on the board when it happened. What were the the biggest problems that you faced with Chromebooks in general with the students?
Well, the biggest problem again was was damage, you know, drop damage. When we first went with a one-to-one program, we were bringing them to school and taking them home and bringing them to school and taking them home. Hopefully, we would be in a situation where the protective cases would help mitigate a lot of that damage. You know, you're talking about kids putting them in bags, book bags with sitting, sitting on them or stepping on them. Most of it was just damage due to rough, rough use.
Okay, and they can take these home, right?
And they, yeah. I'm guessing they would be used mostly at home. But, you know, depending on our model, we will be bringing them to school as well.
Yeah, that's true. I understand that. Yeah, okay. Because I did hear people make a lot of troublesome comments about the Chromebooks last time, you know. I I don't know whether they were true facts or not. I just heard people complaining, you know. They couldn't get the stuff, you know, that they needed on them and so forth. Okay, you're saying that was not generally a problem, though?
No. Generally, the Chromebooks are geared for the online education. We, I mean, like, what we utilized during the last three months was the Google applications, you know, Google Classrooms and the platform of online applications that are provided by Google. And Chromebook is based on that. So if we stick with most of those, those resources, we should be pretty fine. They're not going to do everything. They're not going to run high-end graphics or CAD programs or video editing software. But for the basic things of reading a document or looking at a presentation, watching YouTube, reading email, the majority of the things that we would be doing, the Chromebook is a very suitable platform for that.
We've had a lot of discussion about curriculum, updating curriculum and so forth. How does that process correlate with these Chromebooks?
Well, with curriculum comes content and textbooks. You know, your curriculum is based on a textbook. Well, most textbooks manufacturers, they used to sell you a textbook and the online content was the freebie that they threw in. And now it's kind of reversed. The online content is what you're purchasing and you, if you needed textbooks, we'll throw, throw those in. The advantage to that is, say, in a history class, if we rely on textbooks, how many textbooks are going to have any notation about? History teachers are going to be able to teach about the COVID nineteen pandemic in history because it's not in the book. In fact, we probably have books in our school right now that who's the president in that book, you know? It could be still Bill Clinton. We don't know. Where tomorrow, we can have a history book that has a whole chapter on the COVID nineteen pandemic due to the the ability to have fresh content instantaneously.
This is a huge expense. Six hundred and five thousand in three years is a huge expense, and I'm not, I'm not upset about that. I just want to know how we handle the curriculum updates, which we discussed at the various levels, and they were not cheap either, right, Mr. Mash? They were not cheap, those curriculum.
They are not. Textbooks now, when we purchase textbooks, we, we're spending, we're allotting several hundred thousand dollars for textbook updates.
Yeah.
May I also? I was asked to implement when the district first went to a one-to-one at the middle school. And a major problem, and I don't want to be a wise guy or anything, but I think there has to be an awareness of our community that these are a costly item, even even though they might not be at high end. And there has to be a level of accountability and responsibility of our kids using them in transporting them back and forth. The district is making a considerable effort and a commitment to, if this is a direction that the the board decides to go, I think there has to be a level of commitment and dedication on on our our community's part and our children's part to take care of them. And I think some type of insurance has to be an additional component of that. I don't have all the particulars in that. We will be looking forward, moving forward into that. But I think there has to be obviously a level of accountability with with our community in making sure that, you know, that these valuable resources are taken care of. This is what kids are going to be using moving forward. My granddaughter knows how to use this thing better than I do.
Okay, so we still have to update the curriculum in addition to purchasing these Chromebooks. Am I correct?
But we can, or there's a lot of free content out there through PDE that the teachers can go on our SAS website. They can pull a lot of their curriculum out of what's already defined by the state, the standards and the content. So a lot of our teachers currently right now will develop their own curriculum and content. Some still do use book content, but there are a lot of teachers also that have devoted a lot of energy and time in developing their own content for their classes.
Maybe I'm getting C now, but I thought we spent a lot of time talking about updating curriculum at certain levels. And that was separate, that was separate from this, right?
Yes.
And we agreed to keep that in the budget. We agreed to keep that in the budget, didn't we, the curriculum for? And we, we agreed to keep that in the budget. We agreed to keep that in the budget, didn't we? The curriculum for, it was moving through the years.
Dr. Pike, it, it looks like some of that's going to stay, but we talked about the AP books staying. It looks like they're moving some of that money towards staff professional development. But also, I think they did a technology survey with the teachers, whether they wanted technology or they wanted books and the teachers wanted technology. So I asked last meeting, does that mean books or programs? And I think that was a combination. So is there any money still allotted for programs?
Alvar, the, the money that was allotted for our curriculum, I, I think there was about a hundred thousand dollars that if, when I, on that spreadsheet that I shared with you. Like a hundred and eight thousand dollars. Now, obviously, that doesn't all necessarily have to go to professional development there. There's a lot of free professional development out there also. I would be a big proponent of allowing that money to ride in there. That way we can see what the needs are going to be a- as we progress through, through the school year. There, there is just so many uncertainties as to what's going to happen. Geez, just, and even tomorrow.
Mr. Mashah or Mr. Pushkar, why did we stop the program of the one-to-one with the Chromebooks? And, you know, can somebody answer that? Either one of you guys?
Because it wasn't fully funded. We didn't stop the program. We started running into, we started the program, but the budget crises of the past years, then we start, stopped replenishing those Chromebooks and we stopped purchasing new ones to expand that to a one-to-one program in the K through five area. We, we started with the six through eight, then we went to the high school, nine through twelve. We never made it to the elementaries because of budgetary cuts.
So, so those have all been in use previously to this year? All those Chromebooks?
Everything that we have, you know, that have all been used. And in fact, we've, we've gotten extraordinarily extra life out of them. You know, they're, they're all, we, we went through the entire fleet, what we had left that was not damaged. Because we didn't even have the funds to repair the ones that were damaged. I've got probably a hundred and fifty in my room that just need like a screen repair. But it's just, we're two people and the funds aren't there to send them out, so it's a thirty-six dollar replacement screen or a fifty dollar replacement screen, but someone has to purchase that screen, someone has to take that apart, put a new screen in and, and, you know, we were took them back from going back and forth from home to school to try to kind of keep what we had left that wasn't damaged alive. So we didn't get what was left there broken and we put them in the classroom so that we could still be able to use them. Interestingly enough, if you think about the one-to-one program and the quantities, if you were to provide every teacher with thirty Chromebooks so that, or twenty-five or thirty Chromebooks, you would have more, you would have to purchase more Chromebooks than if you bought every single kid their own Chromebook.
Mr. Pushkar, are you saying that the success of this program is heavily contingent upon appropriate, consistent future funding?
The success of any techno, educational technology, like I said, if any educational technology program is dependent upon having technology that is work, that works, that's up to date, technology is perishable. It's just like every year you buy salt for doing sidewalks and, and the parking lots. It's a consumable item. It's a budgetary line item that is in there every year. You're going to have to have some kind of plan, some kind of refresh cycle such that when the software is out of date and it no longer works, you can replace it with something.
Well, I'd like to, to make a suggestion here that, you know, is probably a dirty word. But maybe we ought to consider putting that amount of money into an assigned fund balance so that we are guaranteed to have that money. Because it is very vital for our children's education, consist, educational consistency. We can't spend all this money and in three years down the road, we say we don't have it. But I think, I would ask you to consider assigning this money so that it's guaranteed to be there for the duration of this project.
That has always been the problem with technology in our district is that we've never had a line item, a budget line item where we can work with to replace technology as needed. We've only ever bought technology with found money. We've used grants and
But this is a contract. We're going into a contract. Would you call this a contract, Vince? This is a contract. Yeah, so and I'm saying we need to guarantee that funding. And that's what I'm hearing Mr. Pushkar say. We need to have guaranteed funding for the future. At least the length of this contract. And I would recommend that we consider putting it into an assigned fund balance. It comes out of the budget anyhow. I mean, that doesn't matter where it is. But it would be like a guarantee that we would have this. I would hate to see us spend all this money and in two years down the road say, well, we can't find it now or, you know, it's a problem, but I mean, I certainly support this. Don't get me wrong. I just, you know, me, long-range plan, you know, that's, that's been my mantra for a long time. And this is a big part of a long-range plan. Thank you.
Thank you for mentioning that, Dr. Pike, because I know that on several occasions, we have made comment about having multiple-year plans, and I think this is a good step in providing a multiple-year plan for our curriculum in our educational process. You know, I, I do think it's vital to provide our kids the, the tools to be successful. And in today's world, technology is, is that, those tools.
We've said that many times, Vince, and I agree. I just would like to see sort of a guarantee that we can make sure this is going to work for the next three years.
Sure.
Is that something we can vote on tonight?
I would like to say something.
Go ahead.
I'm not. What I want you to be aware of is that each one of those financial recovery criterias has their own calculations. And it is so hard to try to keep a school district out of trouble with every one of them during this kind of a situation that we have now. And although that sounds like a, a worthwhile objective, if your unassigned fund balance gets too low in proportion to their different measurements, then you run the risk that you're violating one of those criteria.
That's right.
So without those numbers and without running them down that list to tell you where you are now and where you're going to be next year, that's not something you want to just shoot from the hip on tonight.
No, that's, that's why I wasn't sure you could even happen. I'm just trying to think of some way to give us security in terms of We just hope for the best then.
I, I mean, it's, it's a discussion worth having, but I'd like to see. Well, we haven't finished the fiscal year yet, but you know, when that happens and maybe more accurate calculations could be done.
But even that hundred and sixty-five thousand isn't that much, but it would guarantee that three-year payment or whatever that is. Well, it's okay.
I'm wincing.
Yeah, I understand.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mrs. Rhodes.
Okay. So are we ready to move forward then on the authorization application? And if so, what would the number be? Are we going to go with the nineteen hundred so every child has a, has a Chromebook?
Those are the numbers I read to you. If you want some other combination, then we have to go through and input those numbers.
Okay. Comments? Are we ready to move forward? Are we all on the same page here?
I think you need a motion.
Okay. All right, can I have a motion, please? For what Mr. Patonic has read?
Take the motion.
I need a second.
Second is done.
I need a second.
Gail, I would give you a second. Are we talking about nineteen hundred or fifteen hundred or a thousand?
Nineteen hundred.
Nineteen hundred. That's to ensure that each child in the district has a Chromebook.
You know what? I'll, I'll, I'll second that motion as long as it's for every child.
All right, is there any further discussion on this?
Mr. Mashah, can you tell us what our exact enrollment is?
I think it's nineteen hundred and forty-eight. I would have to pull those numbers off of SEIU.
It's currently nineteen oh eight.
Nineteen oh eight, I'm sorry.
But, but does that number, but does that number include students that are outplaced? Or is that just within our own buildings?
That's
That's probably total.
That's total outplaced. No other discussion? Any other questions?
So if nineteen oh eight's not enough to cover everybody, I mean, nineteen hundred's not enough to cover everybody?
Mrs. Tarzan, that, that number included kids that are outplaced, correct?
Yeah, but it's a hundred and I would count the sola kids. It comes to eighteen fifty-two. Without the outplaced kids.
That covers it then.
And when you did the survey, how many people said they needed technology?
I thought it was three hundred and thirty-one. I'm not sure. I have that written down.
But the problem with it, we, we had, we had a very high respondent. There's, if there's nineteen hundred and eight families, we get thirteen forty-eighty-three. There's still what's, five hundred families did not respond. So we don't know if their response was because they felt to do so. They weren't aware of it, or they don't have the technology to respond.
So I'm going to be honest, I'm very, very torn on the number. I'm torn on the dollar amount. But then I go back to today at that task force meeting and a teacher had said, if we're moving forward with an online platform, that it's very difficult to provide staff teaching, staff development in order to know what system we're going to. And like, so I, I'm very torn between this dollar amount toward, between the nineteen hundred and then going back to if we do end up in an online environment, again, we have thirty-five, thirty kids in the classroom and we have fifteen different types of devices. And then that becomes an issue. So like, that's where I'm torn. I'm torn in thinking that, gee, I don't know that I want to purchase nineteen hundred when maybe only we need a thousand, maybe we only need nine hundred. But I'm torn. I'm very torn. Just because I think I, after Pike moving forward, you need to have that, and I said it before, we need to be, if it's a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars a year, we need to be putting a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars a year, every single year in our budget, not so much in the signed fund balance, but just a line item in our budget that's a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And again, that's a lot of money, so I'm torn and that's why. So I, I don't know.
Is it true that if we have the money in the, in assigned fund balance, that if a grant comes through, we can't get the money from the grant because they already have the money put aside for the payment?
I think that would be dependent upon the kind of grant. I don't know the answer to that for a general answer.
It would also to be dependent upon what you use that grant for. Okay, I mean, if you're using that grant to purchase more Chromebooks, then you're supplanting your, your budget. And it also depends on the criteria of the grant, what the grant specifies. But if you're supplementing your budget by purchasing content or accessories or other, other things that are related to online education, maybe you're, maybe you're doing a subscription or content with that grant. That'll, that's just it. It allows you to maybe do other things with grant money. That's, that's the whole problem is using grant. We've only ever used things like grant money to purchase technology and we never know when it's coming.
Or not.
Exactly.
Mr. Mashah, do we have, I'm sorry, Mrs. Smith, go ahead.
That's okay. I was just going to say, I'm a bit I, I wonder if there's parents that are going to say, I would rather use my own device because I'm responsible for it and I don't want to pay the insurance on a school device. I don't know why people answered, we only have three hundred people that need computers. Is that why? Or is it because? I mean, I'm sure we're all concerned about the same thing is that we're in a deficit so much. I do think that you know, we, we don't know what's happening in the fall. But if we're doing a new sort of online format, obviously the kids need the technology. But if all of those kids don't need the technology, then can we buy the curriculum for the, for the devices with the rest of that money? I mean, I guess I'm just Mr. Mashah, do you have anything about that? Like, do you know why people said?
I, I do not. I, I wish if, if I had a crystal ball right now, I really would like to be able to figure out what the circumstances are. The, the challenge that schools are facing with is we have to plan for multiple contingencies and we have to have the ability to be able to pivot or change very quickly. And, and the only way that, that, that's feasible is to have the, the, in my estimation, maybe I, I, I might be wrong, maybe Mr. Pushkar has a different. We, we have to have the, the technology to allow us to be able to shift and pivot from face to face or to an, an online platform and I, I just think consistency and making sure that, I mean, if we're going to spend a lot of time and money providing, providing professional development, and I also heard the pleas from a lot of people at that task force meeting, that we need to provide the professional development for our teachers. We, it's very, we send a mixed message if we're providing for one device and another device. I think just the consistency and the uniformity, if we had everybody in, in our district working toward a single goal, I think it would be a lot easier.
I think you mentioned at one point the amount of families that didn't have internet access. I don't know if you mentioned it today, this evening or at the task force meeting, but do you have a plan for that as well? If they have a computer but not internet access, it might be a problem.
I, I have, and once again, I don't know the numbers, but in talking to the administrative staff and looking especially probably at the, of the needs of our most impacted students, we really wanted to, it was very fortuitous because at the bid opening yesterday, there was a gentleman there from T-Mobile, and, and I would like to look at the purchase of some hotspots. But, you know, there's a monthly fee associated with that and, and there's no possible way that we would be able to finance or be able to, to afford multiple hotspots. So we would, we would want to try to purchase as many as we possibly could with the idea that down the line, if, if there's an area that does not have coverage, we could load one of those hotspots maybe into a van, drive it to that area, park it there, and that way we could have accessibility and, and that means, and once again, I'm acting like I understand and can explain that. Maybe Pushkar could add to that, but, you know, in our conversations we had, we've been having, you know, I, I don't know that we can meet the challenges of everyone not having internet accessibility, but we can at least try to provide some form of means of getting them that, whether or not it's a district van parked in, in strategic locations or what.
And the, at the end of the day, there's no silver bullet that's going to magically And the, at the end of the day, there's no silver bullet that's going to magically, uh, solve everybody's problem. There's going to be, like, we could get hotspots, but, you know, some of our, uh, remote people live in a low-lying area that doesn't get a cell signal. The other thing we looked at was providing students with people that didn't have technology, we provided paper packets. We can provide them with flash drives with the teacher content on them. Chromebooks will work offline and you can pull the files and the sheets and the pictures and the spread, the forms that the kids have to fill out on a flash drive and they can, uh, work offline, so to speak. And, you know, we, we're gonna have to find some kind of contingency, uh, that has several different solutions. And, you know, and if we can't afford to provide every person that doesn't have internet access a hotspot, like we, like, uh, Mr. Mascher said, you know, at least we can have a collection of hotspots that we can schedule to be in different places at different times. And that's all.
Thank you, Miss Pushkar.
Just to be clear. Peggy. This number down at the bottom of the page should be six hundred five thousand four hundred seventy-three. So please amend your papers. Thank you.
So how do we want to proceed with this? Um, do we want to go ahead and take a vote? To allow the application to go forward then for the nineteen hundred?
Isn't that what the motion was? Is that the motion?
Yes, it is. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, I guess we're ready for roll call. Mr. Beistall? Mr. Beistall?
I think he's frozen.
Yeah, it looks like he's frozen. I have frozen a couple of times already. Mr. Carson? Mr. Carson? Do you have to unmute?
My battery's going dead here. Um, I'm voting no.
Dr. Fike?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Um, yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall back or, Mr. Beistall? Yes? Unmute.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Seven, yes. One no, one absent. Motion carries. Okay. Barbie?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah. You're good. Uh, Mr. Mascher, do you have anything else?
I do not, Mrs. Rhodes.
All right.
Please, if we could have an executive session to go over the, the safety report though.
Yes, um, we're gonna have a, an executive session at the end of the public meeting tonight here. So everybody stay tuned.
Um, can I ask a question real quick? If we just voted to do this, um, should we just vote so that Mr. Pushkar can go ahead and start this process or do we have to wait till next week?
You're gonna cause difficulties. Um, I mean, this is planned this way. There's some reasons for it. The, the original, you know, ultimate deadline was July ninth. I, I think that if Mr. Clara gets that in and doesn't see any glitches, then, you know, we ought to be ready by the twenty-fifth. Um, I, I just don't want this to go wrong here at the last minute.
I don't understand.
There, there, there are a couple of things I'm trying to clear up with the, uh, people at Dell that, um, I had some conversations with them today. And, um, it's not about the, the, the dollar or the bids, it's some of the paperwork that has to go back and forth with them. And I want to make sure that we don't have any misunderstanding over that. What is it? Do you have us an answer to what it is? Or are we just gonna be in limbo again? Well, no, I, I'm gonna bring you all that back, bring all that back to you next Thursday. The original goal here was to get you bid numbers that could be used for that application. Make sure that that process is timely. And then, I mean, if, if that goes in and for some reason you're not eligible and you've already committed to this, then where do you get that money? You know, I, you know, I don't want to advocate for that kind of a chance.
That's why we would like to submit the application tomorrow, if possible, Monday, the latest. It has to be.
Well, you've just been given authorization for that, so.
Yeah. Move forward. Soon as you can, it's probably the best thing to do.
Mr. Claire and I have been biting it thick.
I'll bet. I'll bet. All right, um, we're gonna move on then to, um, your business manager, Mr. Mornell, you want to go over some information with us?
Yeah, that, that, um, that process with, with Dell and the, uh, the down payment and, and the lease structure and the, the complexity of their lease document, and Mr. Platonic and I spent, uh, some time today going over that and, and I agree with the, the timing, the, the structure of the process. So, nothing that any of us want to hold up, but we wanted you to have numbers so that Mr. Clara would have permission to input those numbers and get it from the state on, on that application. So I'm glad you understand that. Now, the, uh, I emailed out, um, this evening about five thirty, I'm guessing, and, and update on, on the, the budget, which, uh, you know, looked like this in the email. Uh, sorry, that's not part of board docs. But we went over some, some matters Tuesday night. So I, I updated the French. In other words, what we approved on May twenty-first is now amended tonight. That includes the, uh, the net change in federal revenues. So it includes the CARES Act funding. And again, I, we are gonna get that. But we also had some reductions in our Title I, Title II and Title IV money. So that net change in federal revenues has been added to the federal revenue line and I had that highlighted in yellow, which changes federal revenues to eight hundred and seventy thousand and sixty-three dollars. Also, we had some, uh, known expenditure changes. To date, obviously, we're going to be spending that three hundred and forty-nine thousand of CARES Act money. So that amount of money is gonna be added to the expenditure line. And we had the retirement payout for a retired teacher of forty-three hundred and fifty dollars. A request to, to you to add back, uh, we had previously cut our, our youth of age with ESS from twenty down to eighteen. But there's a need to add one back. So that's twenty-one thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Our insurance renewals through the Pennsylvania School Boards Association and our workers' comp with UPMC, the total increase in the renewal package that you approved tonight was eighteen thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars. Then we have some, uh, retirement payout money for retired, uh, uh, school secretary plus her post-retirement benefits. That comes to twenty-five thousand five hundred and ninety-six dollars. So right now, the, the known expenditure increase is four hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars. So that amount of money was, was added as a special line in section three of the summary. I called that line ten A. Plus expenditures, and I misspelled expenditures. I'm sorry. Uh, of four hundred and eighteen thousand. So the expenditure total is increased to thirty-one million, three hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and three dollars. The revenues are thirty million, seven hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars. The difference between those numbers, as we talked about the other night, increases the, uh, potential operating deficit between revenues and expenditures to six hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. And that's the known conditions that we have as of today. So I know there are some potential other items that, that may come up for us. I'm gonna take a breath there and, and ask for a, a comment. Any comments? It's probably hard trying to read your email screen as well as your Zoom meeting screen. I, I wish I could figure out how to add an extra screen both at home and at work. So you can do two things at one time without flipping through screens. I guess minimize this.
Mr. Mornell, can I ask you a question about, um, the cyber school or line item?
Cyber school line item? Go ahead.
It looks like we overspent last, this, for this current year, we overspent not foreseeing what would be coming. But it looks like our budget, and I don't know if it's been updated since the last one that I can see here, it looks like our budget for next year is less than what we paid this year. And I'm wondering if with things that are coming up, if it should at least be equal, if not more.
That, that's a possibility if we wish to add that to the expenditure budget.
Well, I guess I'm asking you as the business manager who knows a lot more about it than I do, should we do that? Because I, I would think we'd start at what we spent this year.
I, and, and I, I can't disagree with that at all. Cyber school costs are, are, uh, are one of those areas that are, that are slippery to get a hold of. I've seen in the past where they've gone down and of course, we've seen where they've gone up. What will happen for the next year? I guess if we anticipate that the numbers are gonna increase, then your logic is sound about adding that to the expenditure budget. Perhaps another hundred thousand dollars to potentially cover at least equal to what, uh, we're spending this year.
Yeah, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, we spent, I think one point oh five five this year so far. Is that correct? One point oh five million?
I don't have, I don't have my computer system at work here at home. Word for that.
Okay, but it looks like, I think this, this is coming from the email you sent us in, um, March. It looks like, and that's why I don't know if this has changed since then. But it looks like we only have budgeted for next year nine hundred and seventy-one thousand. So that's where my question's coming from. I'm suspecting we'll have the same amount at least.
And, and, and that is very possible. Um, I know that whether it passes at the state level or not, I know there have been considerable discussions on amending the tuition rate that we have to pay. Now, whether that gets passed or not, we don't know yet. It could be part of the state's final budget adoption. They have not completely adopted a, a full budget yet. But it's possible that we may amend that where we pay less of a tax figure. But I, I, I see what you're saying and, and again, I cannot disagree with maybe erring on the side of caution and adding to that number. I'm a cautious citizen, so that's logical to me.
Yeah, I think, um, one of our big concerns in our previous conversation here is about the, um, you know, are, are students gonna jump from our brick and mortar and more of them going to, uh, enroll in, uh, cyber school? And that could be a very, um, costly situation for us.
Yes, that is a little fear.
Yes, definitely.
And that's why we need to continually promote our school system to our, our public. Be positive about it, promote it, encourage people. However, when we do that, I'm not a marketing person, but we need to, we need to encourage our, our families to keep their kids in our school. Or at least put them in our SOLO program. I don't know how that works for different grade levels, but yes, we, we need to get our, we need to get our customers back, so to speak. When, when people go from Pepsi to Coke or vice versa, those companies are fighting to get their customers back. But we have to do the same thing. We can't just punt and, and say, okay, well, they, they dropped us and went to, went to A side and accept that as a given. We, we have to fight that.
So what, what are we doing? What's gonna happen? Are we bumping that up?
You want me to bump that up for next week's adoption? I can do that. And I can communicate to you. I will, uh, relook at the, the current to date numbers. That's, you know, things have changed since the shutdown. And we don't truly know what the new enrollment will be for the new school year. That's always the big unknown with cyber charter schools. You don't know until after the new school year has started, who is at those cyber charter schools. Of course, you have an idea of who, who is there at the end of the school year, but you don't know who's going to enroll. You don't know who are from the past, those that were listed as twelfth graders, but that's always the big unknown. And that's why it's always been a slippery target to get a hold of.
Well, I think at least you gotta base it on last year's numbers. I mean, I must maybe not bump it up, but you at least gotta go with whatever we had last year.
Okay, I, I will do that.
That's just me. I mean, I, I'm like, you know, whatever.
I agree.
I, I, again, I, I agree with that logic and, and I didn't want to add any more dollars to the budget without, you know, you knowing about it and talking about it and approving it. I think it's an excellent question and, and I'm glad we're talking through it. And I will do that. And I will let you know ahead of time the numbers that I come up with. It's either gonna match the current year number or last year's number or some version thereof. But I will do that. But I will do that and let you know.
Mr. Marnell, you can always transfer funds between categories, right?
Well, absolutely. During a school year, you have the ability after the first ninety days, the school code gives you permission to transfer monies between line items. Yes, that is what we can do.
You can always do that.
Yes, ma'am. I know you have some regarding potential memorandums of understanding with three employee groups. And I know you're talking and discussing the potentiality of perhaps agreeing to pay their health insurance increase. If you do that, that would be another addition to the budget, or, no, it would be. It would be. But the question there is, how long would you ride that for the whole fiscal year? If you do that for the three groups of questions, for the full fiscal year, it would run between a hundred and ten thousand to a hundred and twelve thousand. And once I meet with our benefits secretary, I will firm up the number, but I'm gonna say it would, with a hundred and twelve thousand, twenty-three percent, the very close range, but one-ten to a hundred and twelve thousand for the three employee groups if the board wanted to pay for the health insurance increase for that group.
Is that on top of what we already pay?
Remember, the way it would be that we would pay for the increase in their health insurance. The health insurance went up this year five point three percent. So, we would pay, the employees would continue to do their payroll deduction. But instead of their payroll deduction increasing because the premium increased, we would pay that difference. So, if somebody's paying a hundred dollars a month and it would go up to a hundred and ten, we would pay the ten dollars a month for them. I'm just using a general number.
No, I think that's good. I just, I'm confused because, say it is a hundred dollars and their total goes up to a hundred and ten. Typically, they would be paying eight percent of that ten dollars typically, correct? Or whatever their percentage is that they pay. So, I'm just curious what the number is if they were doing it and what are extra insurance costs is. I sent you an email about this a couple of days ago because it's really confusing to me. I apologize.
Well, it is confusing. In other words, I did a detailed spreadsheet for Mr. Masha, and I have that at work. But it came out to be seven thousand nine hundred and some odd dollars for the health insurance increase. Not the total increase. In other words, just the five point three percent increase for the teachers group. So, that would be eight thousand dollars a month, ninety-six thousand dollars a year. Now, they're the biggest group, so that's where the biggest amount of that potential hundred and ten thousand comes from. So, they're eight thousand a month, just to pick up that increase that they normally would pay because they're at eight percent of the premium. So, instead of paying eight percent of an increased premium, we have to plug in the exact dollar amount they're paying this year and pick up the difference in the premium cost.
We're paying a hundred percent of the increase.
That's correct. So, if I have your authorization, I will add that amount of money to our expenditure budget for next week.
So, I guess my question is, we keep adding things in and adding things in. What do we do about the deficit that we have?
Unfortunately, there's no way to add money to the revenue side. So, the only way to address the deficit is to cut matters or we go with a lower worst-case scenario that PASBO gave us. You remember a significant portion of that potential deficit was because we booked what they calculated as a worst-case scenario for revenue loss for every district in the Commonwealth, and we used the numbers that they gave us to be cautious. So, we went with that logic. We could go with a lesser amount.
So, what do you suggest? I feel like at the time, you suggested going cautiously.
I still do.
Okay. Is that what most school districts are still doing, going with the?
With my conversations with my peers, yes.
Okay, that makes sense. That's what you think.
No one wants to step out on that thin branch and have it snap off beneath them. Somebody used to say, I feel like a fat squirrel on a thin branch, so. I know why Dr. Ficus laughing.
It's that mental image, Jim.
I got a lot of visceral fat I gotta lose off my body.
There we are.
Mrs. Marnell asked me on a diet. I've lost eight pounds so far. I got about another, at least twenty-two pounds to go.
Keep going, Jim, that's great.
So, does this just mean that the plan is to take out the fund balance?
Well, that's what would happen. See, as long as your estimated ending fund balance plus your revenues are greater than your planned expenditures, that is legal. What we've been looking at is the difference between the revenues and expenditures. That's where the deficit is, between revenues and expenditures. Now, we have fund balance, and that's what would cover any potential deficit for next year. Now, let's say that worst-case scenario doesn't arrive or something much less. Then, of course, our true deficit next year would be less, and then the usage of fund balance would be less.
I guess I'm confused because we keep, I feel like the first half of the year, it was, don't ever touch the fund balance, don't ever touch the fund balance, and now it's go to the fund balance.
Well, that's correct because during the first part of the year, we were not in this crisis. The crisis has forced all of us in this business, from the wealthiest district to the poorest districts, to they pushed, this crisis has pushed us all into this boat to one extent or the other. If you're a wealthy school district, I'm sure to a much less extent, but maybe it's worse for them. I don't know what the Fox Chapels are doing or the Upper St. Clairs, but, you know, I do know that here in rural Pennsylvania, we know it's painful. It could be very painful, and none of us want to touch our fund balances. But we're fighting to survive the upcoming fiscal year to live another day, so to speak, to see another fiscal year. And of course, the state government knows that, the federal government knows that. And as this whole situation unwinds over the next several months, more stimulus funding may have to be done by the federal government to pass through to the state governments for school districts and local governments, boroughs and townships. I hate to sound blum, but I'm a cautious citizen, and with the flare-ups that are occurring across the country and reading history, what happened with the Spanish influenza, that I believe there's going to be a severe rebound of this situation in the fall months. But let's all pray that that doesn't happen. I don't want to see that happen, but again, we're dealing with a large unknown here. Everyone is. And I think we're trying to give you the best possible advice that we can. And of course, being cautious doesn't hurt you. I think being overly optimistic could hurt you.
I do still carry a lot of concerns for this time next year when we have contracts and we have curriculum and.
I agree.
We don't have new money coming in, so we're taking all this money from the fund balance now. But if we're going to do anything with other things and no new revenues, we'll have to be taken from the fund balance again.
Yes, I share that same concern too. I think we all do. You're absolutely right.
So, what do we do? Do we start planning now or just, I feel like it's, it's?
I think we do plan and continue to plan. And I heard earlier that there's going to be the finalization of committees. So, I think the discussion on throwing out ideas on how to address this situation now and potentially for next year, that's what we need to do. We need to work together to address it, much like the task force started today with potentialities of reopening. But we need that finance committee to sit down and bring ideas to the table, bring in information that we pick up and address that. You know, cuts of this nature would be painful. We all know that. We're not talking cutting a hundred thousand dollars out of the budget. I mean, we're talking six hundred thousand potentially, maybe more. Yes, it will be more if we, when we add in an increased expenditure for cyber tuition and paying for insurance increases, another two hundred thousand at least, so we're up to eight hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. It just keeps, we just keep sliding backwards.
So, just, you know, there's some of us that are new here. To sum it up, your suggestion is to go with it how it is and hopefully, things are better than you think they are and you won't have to take as much from the fund balance.
I guess that is what I'm saying. In other words, a calculated risk short of coming up with six to eight hundred thousand dollars of real cuts. Now, if we're talking about that, then we need to sit down and really have a hard conversation with the administration on that. We would be cutting across all departments to some degree, all departments. Now, one idea that I did throw out there in one of our earlier meetings, and I know it didn't hold any water, nor did it hit, but your student activity account, your thirty-two hundred is worth over seven hundred thousand dollars. The athletics was over five hundred thousand dollars. If you truly think that you're not going to be able to have sports in the fall, especially contact sports, you may want to reconsider suspending sports for the whole year. That's a half a million dollars right there. Again, you want to talk about ideas on cutting, right now, you're down to painful cuts. The easy cuts have been done. We're down to the bone in the sinew and ligaments and muscles. We've cut all of our visceral fat. I wish I could do it, Daddy, but I can't. You understand what I'm saying? You do, everybody does. Any cuts that are made are gonna be very difficult and very painful, and maybe that's what needs to happen since we're in a disaster. Anytime the country's in a disaster, painful decisions have had to be made and taken. I hate to be Mr. Blum about it, but.
Somebody has to be the bearer of bad news.
So, Mr. Masha, from the administrative standpoint, is that what you suggest with you too?
I would like to digest this a little bit more and have further discussions with Jim, but I, I, any cuts, I do concur with what Mr. Marnell just said. Any cuts are gonna be extremely painful. We're gonna, we're gonna be impacting, we're gonna be impacting our district greatly.
You know, Mr. Masha had a wonderful preamble, wonderful speech today and comments that the comments that people brought out, no one was to take offense to them. In other words, you know, it was like brainstorming. You know, make your comments, bring them out. No one is gonna be shamed or chastised for what they say. You know, you have to talk it through, and you have to be willing to share the ideas and basically see what sticks on the wall. So, we all need to think about it and speak up to the areas that you think maybe you could support a cut in.
I'd like to know what a ten percent cut across the board in all extracurricular activities would look like. So, I mean, I know like we.
That would be about seventy thousand dollars.
I mean, I don't think I'm willing to say no sports. I think that if we do that, that's, we're gonna lose students, then we're gonna lose reinvestment. Because, I mean, those aren't gonna stay here if they can't play sports. I mean, they can go and go somewhere else. And athletes could be recruited to some of these Catholic schools to play. I just, I just would hate to see that. I mean, obviously, if we have to cancel sports because of the pandemic, that's a different thing. But to cancel the entire year of sports, I think is, talking about them starting tomorrow.
Oh, I agree. I don't want to see that happen either.
So, but I mean, we all don't want to see a lot of things happen. So, it's, but I'm just saying, we just approved for them to start back as early as tomorrow. And now, we're gonna have to pay all those coaches because we said, you know, if they start, then we pay, but.
Yes.
Michelle, I think if we cut sports, you better look under your car before you start.
I would have to agree.
That idea has come up a number of times over the years, but it's never, it's never happened. That's always the question. What sacred cows can be, which ones have to be saved?
Jim, there's some research that was done several years ago, and it was projected that by 2025, public education as we know it now simply will not exist. Brick and mortar schools will be empty. There will be some alternatives that will pop up among individuals, but they predict that by 2025, the ballgame is over. It's, they say it has become an unsustainable product and that everything is gonna be.
Now, that's a, that's a pretty frightening scenario. Like, that's only five years away.
Do you have any more discussion on this? Any more comments?
The long agenda, Gil.
Yeah, I know. All right, if there aren't any more comments or questions from Mr. Marnell, I guess we'll move on. Is that all? That's all you had, right, Jim?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. All right, then, I guess we'll move on then to the solicitor information.
I already gave that with the information about the Chromebooks.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to old business. SEIU memorandum of understanding.
The board has asked about a memorandum of understanding with the SEIU bargaining unit as per the attachment.
Need a motion? Need a motion?
Just for the record, Mr. Mash and I did have a telephone conversation with Mr. Felt of SEIU. And voting on this would then put the ball in their court. As I understand it, they would be doing a vote on it with the membership from the email. That was not clear when this was originally discussed. So if you vote to approve it, you wouldn't, wouldn't know yet for a while as to whether or not it was accepted.
All right, I still need a motion.
I'll make the motion, Carson.
I need a second.
Second, Beistel.
Any discussion on this?
I'm going to vote for it, Gil, based on the fact that I, I'm assuming that this is what the SEIU body wants. That's why I'm going to vote for it. I guess I really have to assume that. If it doesn't, it doesn't.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess I'm the same way because I misunderstood. I thought that they gave us this memorandum of understanding.
They did.
They did, but the committee did not tentatively agree to it, but rather brought it back to the entire school board to vote upon. So there's never been a tentative agreement. And that, that was their explanation as to where they were. And we, we wanted to be sure about where this all stood, and that was the purpose of the phone conference.
Okay.
And then they did respond that the, the intent would be to then take it to the membership for ratification.
That was.
So we voted on it, we voted on it, and then it goes back to them, and it's either yes or no, and we know where we stand. It's, that's it, right?
That's it.
Let's vote on it then.
Okay.
Did their negotiating committee put this forth or just one person?
What's he called? He's the district representative.
So he's the only person that put this forth? He's not even an employee of the district, correct?
He's not an employee of the district, no. He is their lead negotiator for their unit.
So did the committee sign off on this or just, I, I know you talked to him today. Did he say that the committee that was negotiating with it signed off on it or just he signed off on it? I mean, that's, that was the question I had the other day when I asked you guys. You know, did he just make this letter up and mail it to us?
I will, I will forward you his response, Mr. Polakowski.
Mr. Polakowski, I, I'd like to see the committees meet and discuss with the committee. I mean, because don't they also have a committee? They just don't have this one person. Like, I, I kind of feel like we have somebody from the outside basically saying something. And maybe nobody on the committee even knows this, and this is the first they're hearing of it. Like, that's concerning for me.
Well, I guess, I guess we could vote on this in case it was the committee, because they can always say no, and then we're back where we were before.
We're gonna find that. We're gonna find out.
So we just vote just in case it was the committee and they're good with this?
It may be everybody.
Yeah. Because they can say no. I mean, it's a.
Right.
Right? We have to negotiate, so.
But if we don't vote on it, Kristy, we're never going to know where they stand.
Right. Instead of delaying more, I guess I'm just saying, instead of delaying more and waiting, does it hurt to vote on it because they can always say no?
Right.
Yeah. All right, we ready for roll call?
Mr. Botonic, were you thinking about that or were you, are you good with that?
I, I was thinking about that, but I wanted you to hear Mr. Mash's answer of the email so that you had all the information. Because I have not been part of the negotiations.
Okay.
At the committee level, I've been involved in this phone call and that's kind of it.
All right, roll call please.
Mr. Carson.
Yes. Yes.
Dr. Feig.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Beistel.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
I see we have Rustle on here, but I think that's just a discussion for information. Is that right, Mr. Botonic?
Well, it's just always on here because it's old business. The answer that I gave at, at the beginning was that the second appraiser is to be doing his appraisal tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. New business, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one CW, CTC, proposed budget.
Board will be asked to adopt a resolution approving the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one proposed budget for the Central Westmoreland Career Technical Center.
I would like to make that motion. I think it's a very vital part of our educational program. I'd like to make the motion.
I need a second.
I will second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Dr. Feig.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Beistel.
Yes.
Mr. Carson.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yeah.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
MOU pre-K counts.
Is asked to approve the MOU memorandum of understanding with PICT Private Industry Council in Southmoreland regarding the pre-K counts program at the Southmoreland Elementary School.
Need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second, Beistel.
Any discussion?
I just wanted, I haven't read over this entire thing yet. Is there language in here that allows us that if we're social distancing in our building to not have this program if we need the space?
No.
I mean, that's concerning for me because we're talking about how do we open safely for our.
Where are we going?
And putting more building might not be something we can do. I, I mean, it's just, and I didn't know if there was language there to support if there was a problem.
I do not believe so.
I, I do not see any.
The kind of language that's always been there.
Any other discussion?
Do we know if there's a room available in the primary center for them? Well, we probably don't off the top of our heads, but I was just thinking.
Off the top of my head, but I was trying to look at the, the staffing there and if we're bringing the possibility of a seventh first grade classroom there, I don't think there would be.
You know, this, this is just a comment that I always thought that little, little itty bitty kids belonged with the kindergartners and first graders. They just seem so small in, in, in our elementary school, but they, they are so cute.
Oh, I love watching them walk down the hallway.
They are, they are precious.
Is there not room for them at the primary center?
Without actually looking at the room assignments, if we're gonna, the potential for adding another first grade class, I don't believe there is, but Mr. Clara would have a better understanding of that. Trying to think.
I don't think it belongs in, in the school. I don't think it belongs here.
I, I just am concerned that even if there is an extra room in that building, do we need that extra room in the building to do social distancing for our own students? And I think that's more important right now that our kindergarten and first graders get, are getting to be in the building as much as possible. And I would hate to have space taken up for this that isn't technically a responsibility. I mean, yes, I think it's a great program, but I think we need to include language in this before we accept it that says if we have the space. Because right now, without a plan to move forward into the fall, we don't know if we have space.
Do you want a table this till next week? May I ask? Is there too much uncertainty?
We could. That would be fine. We have to, do we have to have a roll call for the table? Someone would have to make the motion to table.
A second and a voice on the motion to table.
All right. I need a motion then to table this.
I'll make the motion, Carson.
I need a second. Was there a second?
Second, live.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Pose. All right. We're gonna move on to Head Start.
Board is asked to renew an agreement for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year with Westmoreland County, I'm sorry, Westmoreland Community Action, WCA Head Start Early Program at the Rustle School Building. WCA shall pay the school district twenty-three thousand four hundred and ninety-three dollars or one thousand nine hundred fifty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents per month times twelve months, beginning July first, twenty twenty to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. As part of the federal program, WCA is now required to also have an MOU with the school district as part of their federal program performance standard.
Need a motion?
Carson will make the motion.
Okay. Second.
I'll second, Shaw Williams.
Okay, now question, discussion, questions?
Where does rent come from? How is this rent calculated? I understand it costs us forty thousand dollars a year and we're getting twenty-three thousand? Am I correct? Tell me if you're wrong.
You're, you're correct. We're getting exactly what is stipulated there. And I believe that's the same, same amount they paid for the last year.
Jim, aren't we, aren't, isn't it costing us forty thousand to get twenty-three thousand?
Well, remember, we lost the Westmoreland Intermediate Unit, the Early Intervention Program. They were the other entity that leased space from us. But you're correct. There is a cost to operate the building utilities, a, I think it's a six-hour custodian.
Yeah.
And if it breaks down, has to be repaired.
Well, we're subsidizing it, but I understand that the, the sale of the building makes this, this rental a plus. It's a plus for the sale. Am I right? That's a desirable thing. They want that group in there.
That is a desirable feature.
Correct.
For the sale, for the sale.
Yes.
Yes.
I want to sell, I want to sell the building at any cost.
You already voted for the hundred and fifty.
I, but no, I mean, it, I, I want it done at any cost. I want it done. I don't want them to back out. I don't want them to back out.
Any other comments? Roll call please.
Good girl.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Smith. Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Beistel.
Yes.
Mr. Carson.
Yes.
Dr. Feig.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
New directions.
Board is asked to renew the two-year agreement for educational service twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. New direction program offered by Chestnut Ridge Counseling Service to continue to provide private academic impartial hospitalization programs.
Need a motion?
Carson will make the motion.
Smith will second.
Okay. Any discussion?
How many kids do we have there? How much do we use it? How much do we use it?
It's used on an admin basis, so if, if there is one of our kids that are experiencing some, some problems, that is, that is an option for them. It fluctuates. They could go in for a period of time, they come back out.
Yeah. I'm not a big fan of it. I'll be honest with you. Is there other options, Vince? Do you have other places that you can use besides this one?
They're becoming far and few between.
Yeah. Is, is this one in Union Town?
New directions, I believe so, yes.
This is in Union Town.
Any other comments, questions?
Look, I don't want to vote no if you have no other options, Vince. I mean, I, I don't want to put you in a box here. I mean.
We're limited, Dr. Feig.
Okay, all right.
Roll call please.
Mrs. Smith. Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Beistel.
Yes.
Mr. Carson.
Yes.
Dr. Feig.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
And girls soccer co-op with Gible.
Board is asked to approve a cooperative agreement with Gible for boys' football and girls' soccer for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one season if they are able to play this fall.
Motion.
Second.
Carson.
Any questions, comments? Roll call please.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Beistel.
Yes.
Mr. Carson.
Yes.
Dr. Feig.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
Are you in right service agreement?
Board is asked to approve the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one service agreement with Galilee and Height.
Need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Need a second?
Second, Beistel.
Questions, comments? Roll call please.
Dr. Beistel.
Yes.
Mr. Carson.
Yes.
Dr. Feig.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
Blackbird, blackboard, blackbird, blackboard. Blackboard, 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 renewal.
Board is asked to renew the contract with Blackboard for SchoolWires Software Subscription and SchoolWires Web in the amount of $7,470.42.
Need a motion?
Carson will make the motion.
Second please.
Beistow second.
Questions, comments?
Is this for one year?
Ms. Puskas, I do believe it's one year.
Is this already in the budget?
Yes, it is. And it's for one year.
It is an annual renewal.
Can you add that to the motion?
Yes.
Mr. Carson and Mr. Beistow, are you okay with that?
I'm fine.
Yes.
Okay, all right, fine. All right. Roll call please.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams? Mrs. Williams?
I'm mute.
Sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Beistow?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
Approval of athletic bids.
Board has asked to approve the list of lowest bidders on specified athletic items for the 2020-2021 school year from the bid list sent by the athletic department.
Need a motion?
So bid, Beistow.
Second.
Matt's second.
Questions, comments?
Bids, right, just bids?
Just bids.
Just bids, okay. Thank you.
Roll call please.
Dr. Feig?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Beistow?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
Athletic plan.
We already approved that, Ms. Rhodes.
Oh, okay, that's right. Okay, thank you. Health procedures.
Board has asked to approve a plan of safety for returning to physical presence meetings.
Need a motion?
Motion, Beistow.
Second.
Carson.
Any discussion?
Have I seen this? Was it an email?
It's an attachment, Dr. Feig. I apologize. I might not.
I'll just pass. I'll just pass because I haven't seen it. That's okay. That's okay. I'm sure it's all right. I'll just pass.
Roll call please.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Smith? Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Beistow?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
Just mark pass on it for me.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Seven yes, one pass, one absent.
Retirement?
The board has asked to accept with regrets the retirement of Melissa Bruce, speech teacher, effective June 30th, 2020.
Need a motion?
Thank you, Mrs. Bruce.
Okay, um, you need a motion?
Beistow good. Motion.
Second.
Shaw Williams, second.
Okay. Roll call please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Smith? Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Beistow?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Dr. Feig?
Yes.
Mrs. Love? Mrs. Love?
She looks like she's, there she is.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes. Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
Resignation.
Are we able to do that? Vote upon that?
I don't think we should, Vince. I don't think we've resolved this at all.
Motion to table it?
I'm making motion to table it.
And I, I have a concern about that, though. We really need to move forward with posting that. That's so, I mean, I, I mean, I guess it's only a week, but we're talking about sports starting tomorrow. I mean, so that's a concern. Are we able to, he's resigning the position? I, I mean, I don't think we need to make a decision on the other, but can we accept this resignation so that we can post the position?
My understanding was that Mr. Mash wanted to discuss this with you in executive session, so that's why I said that.
I'm concerned that we do need to get the process moving along because we have an athletic plan that's that's contingent upon us having an athletic director.
Well, if we don't accept his resignation, he's still the athletic director.
Yes, sir.
Right.
That's true.
I'll second.
Is there, I'm sorry, is there a method to have an executive session in the middle of this meeting and still come back?
We have a meeting next Thursday.
Do we want to wait another week?
Then what's the salary? Tell me the salary and how it was determined.
Are we able to just go off of live? Talk, I don't, just sticks and then go back on?
I have something.
Don't know that we can. That's why I asked the question. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Like Jason said, he's still the athletic director and technically this letter is not, his effective date is June 30th. So he's planning on working up the rest of the school year, the fiscal year. So I think we're okay to wait till next week, really. I mean, yeah, it slows down the process a little bit, but I don't know. Just my thoughts.
Seems like there's already people doing athletic director stuff. Josh Payjack wrote, helped write that letter for the athletic plan and Dan Kofchak helped with that, so I think we're fine.
I made your motion. We table until next meeting.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor of tabling this signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right. All right, moving on.
Mr. Carson, you're opposed?
No, I wasn't. I just got to the button late.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Yeah, my, I'm sorry if I say something late, too. My internet keeps, it literally freezes and then I hear everybody's responses and questions at the same time. And then I don't know where we are, so.
Well, when mine freezes, I can't hear you. I could, you know, it just freezes, so, yeah, fun time. Okay. Um, we're gonna move on then. Assistant cross-country coach, 2020-2021 school year.
Board has asked to approve John Saunders as the assistant cross-country coach for the 2020-2021 school year if sports are permitted to be conducted and completed at that time. Salary for the 2009-2020 school year was $2,586.
Need a motion?
Can I ask a question before we make a motion for Mr. Botonic?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I keep freezing and not hearing. Since we okayed sports to start practicing, doesn't that mean that they'll get paid now? So do we still need to leave that in for fall sports?
I think there's a possibility that you could have practices, but then not follow through with competitions.
I mean, but they're coaching, so wouldn't they then be paid?
But that would result in proration of salary then.
Oh.
Because we're no longer under Act 13.
I, I'm, I apologize. I froze again and I missed what you said.
The coming year is not covered by Act 13. There may be a theoretical possibility of approving practices. And then a determination is made that you can't have competitions. And that could then result in perhaps proration of salaries.
Okay, but they'll get paid for their practice. It will just be, I just want to make sure if they're having practices, they're gonna get paid. We're not waiting to see if there's a season.
What did we do for spring sports? Didn't we pay the full salary?
Yes.
Everyone was paid, yes.
Full salary, not prorated.
Yes.
Well, are we changing the rules?
That was Act 13. That was.
It was Act 13.
We were mandated to do that.
I still think they have a leg to stand on.
Oh, I do, too. I think when we say that you can start practice, then they have a case to get paid their whole amount. I just want to make sure we're not saying you can start practice, but if we don't have games, we're not paying you. Because I think we need to pay them. That's what I'm trying to say, that everyone should get paid if they're starting, and I just want to make sure that's what we're saying.
Well, that's not in this motion, Kristi.
Well, that's not the motion then.
This is not in the.
Well, you just said they would be prorated at least. I just don't want them to do work for nothing. I just think that's something we need to look at.
No, 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 I'm just talking about the content of the motion does not specify that.
Okay.
At least when I'm looking at, at least I'm looking, when I'm looking at.
Okay, we just reword the motion? That if it gets started, they get paid, right?
I think there's confusion over whether you would have to pay them apparently from the members as to whether you're paying them for the entire season, whether they work or not, or whether it's prorated.
You can't reword this motion or the next one because the people that are already hired and in place, you know, they, they don't have an agreement like, like they have, like, what we're gonna do if we're gonna change this motion.
What was our policy before COVID? What would we have done if? Like, we ever have.
I think that's what I'm asking. What would we have done before the Act 13 thing? Because it's confusing since we were mandated to do things.
Well, that's more likely a situation where somebody would resign or was ill and couldn't finish or something. I don't know of a similar situation. That's the problem. Outside mandate.
But you had you had requested that for all future hire for coaches, that it be put, that it be stipulated if the sport was permitted to be conducted and completed at that time.
Oh, it says.
Oh. So that you didn't have to, to cover yourself, so you didn't have to go back and pay if the sport isn't permitted to be held.
Okay, I think I was just confused because at the time we started doing that, no one was allowed to practice, no one was allowed to do anything, and now we just said, go ahead and practice. So that's just what I was clarifying.
Right. But with the COVID going forward, you want it to be covered if it wasn't able to be completed, so you didn't get put in another situation like we just were in.
Right.
But, I mean, that's, if you want it changed, we can amend it.
We have five more coaches to hire, so it's gonna change five times.
Mm-hmm.
There are five changes. If we're going to specifically define the parameters by which they are paid, that's for the, this and five more, and this and four more or something like that.
I just didn't know if we needed to because we approved the health, the athletics plan, and now they can start practicing tomorrow. I just wanted to make sure no one was having harm done either way.
So just someone make a motion to amend personnel issues three, four, five, and whatever the other number is to reflect that.
Six, Peggy, six. Boys varsity, so.
Five and six.
And there's an eight that says volleyball.
What about the people that are already hired in the position, like the football coach, assistant football coach, that there's no turnover in those positions? What do we do about that if we're taking these? All those need changed also, so I'm just throwing that out there. You change these ones, you gotta go back and change every single one of them.
Well, I guess if they start practicing, to me, that means their season started. So if, if we've already voted on that, then it kind of negates that because their season started, so they're doing it, in, in my opinion. That's what I need a clarification on. I might be misunderstanding everything.
Kristi, we might just be stuck paying those other ones where the motion did not include that. We might just have to pay them whether they have a season or not because we didn't include enough information in the motion. I'm just trying to protect us from what happened before.
I think those other people then could come back on us. But, you know, if we're saying that they wouldn't be entitled to it because the sport didn't start, I don't know.
Dr. Feig, I mean, protection from what, from Act 13, from the state?
If you're having to pay, having to pay coaches who don't, who don't have to do the job like we did in the spring, you know, that's all. I mean, if you hire coaches, you know.
Well, that was from the state. I mean, it's nothing that we had control over.
Right, but we do have control over this, right, Jason? We have control over this?
I think so. As of now, we do.
That was, that was what I was getting at. We have control over this now.
Okay, yeah.
Well, something else we think about is the coaches don't sign their contracts till the start of the season for the fall. They didn't sign yet. I know we talked about having it in their contracts also, Mr. Mash.
I did not know that. I did not know that. I thought as soon as we hired them, that was it.
Yeah, we said we was gonna reword their contracts about this whole not playing or the season not being fulfilled, so we can you know, we still have some time.
Mr. Botonic, what's the wording then that we need?
Well, if, if you're gonna have, if they're starting tomorrow, then that is already being triggered. So if you're saying, if sports are permitted to be conducted and completed at that time, if they're working during the summer, you're going to have to pay them during the summer. Now, if they can't, if they can't be completed, then that's what I'm thinking that you're looking at a proration.
How do we do that?
Um, well, the way it's stated now, I mean, I guess anybody can argue anything, but if they're permitted to be conducted and completed if they're permitted to be conducted and completed at that time, um, you've got that language in there. I don't know to what nth degree you want to take this.
And can I just mention that, um, coaches' contracts to start pay with WPIAL officials, it doesn't start when they start practice. Pay starts when WPIAL says you can start.
Season.
Means your season.
Well, the problem is you let them start practice before that. So which are you gonna do?
I think those, I, I think I might have, I think those are voluntary practices now.
Yeah.
If you want to, it's not true, practice, practice.
No, I don't think they call it practice. They call it conditioning, so you, so you can actually do it instead of practice because like Peggy said, that start date is for practice. Anything before that is called conditioning.
So we really wouldn't have to pay them for conditioning. Is that right, Jason?
Well.
I mean, I, I don't know, but.
I wouldn't want to do that, but.
Technically not paying for conditioning. I mean, if, that, that would really make the pay a lot less.
No.
Yeah.
The only trouble I see about, the only trouble I see about this conditioning and everything is they covered under the insurances and everything else if they're not on payroll. David?
I, I, I would have to say no.
Somebody gets hurt there or something happens, then we're on the hook again.
That's the problem.
I'd say if they didn't, like, spring sports like baseball and stuff like that's different. They didn't fulfill their program where football's coming up, you don't know whether they're gonna play it, but they're gonna start practicing, conditioning, whatever. We have to cover our butts to make sure nobody doesn't get hurt or anything and have it truly done the right way. If they start conditioning, they get paid.
I have a question. Is this critical? I mean, hiring these coaches tonight, is this critical? I don't know. I just.
We're not hiring the coaches tonight. They've already been hired, I think, for next year, if I'm not right, if I'm not mistaken. But what's worrying to me is the conditioning starts and somebody gets hurt and there's nobody instructing them that's on the payroll, we are on the hook.
And my question is.
Wrong, David.
I, I agree.
Do we have to do this tonight?
Well, they start tomorrow. They start tomorrow. What happens if somebody gets hurt tomorrow in this conditioning? And we don't, we don't cover our cans about this.
They all start. They all start tomorrow.
Well, whoever wants to start. I'm not saying they're all gonna start, but probably football's gonna start conditioning and your soccer, I don't know when they start, but your football's the most critical one right now with a lot of conditioning, which could come in to somebody being injured.
These are all sports.
Huh?
These are all fall sports.
Well, fall sports. You have to have somebody there that's instructed him in fall sports that weren't, go ahead, whatever.
Well, if we, if they haven't signed their contracts yet, couldn't we just put in the contract or talk to the insurance carrier about covering these coaches for a one-year contract that would cover them in the off-season? If they're in the weight room or if they're on, you know, on the field practice in July?
They only come with some of these coaches that signed for four years already and now you're in violation of their contract.
Well, they may be covered for all we know. The, the insurance, I don't know that insurance only runs for a, a sporting event. It may be a yearly, a whole year's contract that they're in with the liability coverage.
It probably covers probably from the end of school year to end of school year, I would say, but I'm not positive. I'm not an insurance man.
I don't know either. I, I'm just, you know, we gotta get, get over this here.
The only thing I'm looking at is protecting the school district and the kid.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, the kids, I think, are good because they sign, they sign up for this.
They sign up with, because their parents agree to it, where they sign the, uh, the thing saying they're responsible or they're not responsible. They under their insurance?
Yeah, I don't know exactly. I don't know when that happened. All right, because we gotta do some more homework then.
What do we want to do about this? Do we wanna, do we wanna vote on these, uh, coaching positions or what, what is it that we want to do here?
Well, tonight you're gonna hire a soccer coach, right? With Charlie Swink, huh?
Volleyball coach.
When they're covered, when the coach is.
Charlie Swink? About the insurance coverage?
Yeah, I say we vote on them and Mr. Swink can, can, whoever's dealing with it can, can figure that out. But I think we do need to vote on them so they can start practicing. Because that was the point of passing this.
Right, right.
Meeting? He's not with us on meeting?
No. I'm, I'm having trouble hearing everybody. There's, there's a lot of something going on.
Yeah.
Probably the time of night.
All right, are we, uh, are we okay here? Uh, any more comments? Can we move on then? Go ahead and take the, uh, I'll need a motion for this? Or did, did we even read this? I can't remember.
Yes, we read.
Okay, all right, then I need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
And I'll need a second.
Mr. Beistel.
Okay.
Mrs. Williams made a motion. Mrs. Kristen Smith made a second.
That's fine. Roll call.
I think y'all froze. I'm, I'm back now. Try again. Okay.
Can I do roll call?
Yeah, go ahead, roll call. Did you go through it?
Not yet.
Okay, go ahead.
Mrs. Kristen Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel? Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Dr. Fike?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
Assistant girl soccer coaches, 2020, 2021 school year.
Board has asked to approve the following at the request of the head coach, head, I'm sorry, at the head girl soccer coach, Josh Payjack, if sports are permitted to be conducted and completed at that time. Kevin Satt, varsity assistant, salary for the 2019, 2020 school year was $3,703 and Lauren Virgi, volunteer.
Second?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call please.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Dr. Fike?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
Middle school girl soccer coaches, 2020, 2021 school year.
The board has asked to approve the following at the request of head girl soccer coach, Josh Payjack, if sports are permitted to be conducted and completed at, at, at that time. Chris Hickson, middle school head girl soccer coach, salary for the 2019, 2020 school year was $2,972 and Mike May, middle school assistant girl soccer coach, salary for the 2019, 2020 school year was $2,605.
Need a motion? Motion, love. Second?
I'll second.
Call please.
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Dr. Fike?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
varsity soccer assistant coach.
Board has asked to approve Ty Kinter as the high school boys soccer assistant coach as recommended by head coach Jeff Schaefer, if sports are permitted to be conducted and completed at, at that time. Salary for the 2019, 2020 school year was $3,703.
Need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
All right. Kristi and, um, what, who was the second?
I'll second it.
Which?
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call please.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Dr. Fike?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Beistel? Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
FMLA?
Board has asked to approve an FMLA for Megan White's approximately August 24th, 2020 to approximately November 16th, 2020 with no break in service.
Need a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call please.
Dr. Fike?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yeah.
Motion carries eight, one.
Volleyball coach.
Board has asked to approve Heather Meyer as high school volleyball coach for the 2020, 2021 school year at salary of $4,937. This is the 2020, 2019, 2020 school year salary if sports are permitted to be held.
Need a motion?
Motion, love.
Second?
Beistel.
Roll call please.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Dr. Fike?
Yeah.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yeah.
Motion carried eight, one absent.
Mrs. Love, can I interrupt you a sec? Hey, that's, the, can we double check the wage on that next, uh, agenda item? It's, um, 1509. I think it, somebody, we talked about it before, it was 1639?
That's what I thought it was too. I didn't, yeah.
Mrs. Rodriguez had calculated out the hourly rate was 1509, but with the $2,700 additional salary, that was $1.30 additional, it came to 1639. So the $2,700 and the 1509 does add up to the appropriate salary.
Yeah, that, that's okay with me, but that's what we told, uh, the gentleman in the interview what the salary was per hour. So. I mean, it doesn't matter to me what it is, but that's what we told.
What's the 2,700 for? Why is it stipulated that?
That's what the, it's an additional cost above and beyond for, uh, main workers in their contract.
You don't just want to say 1639 an hour then, huh?
It calculates out to 1639.
But you don't want to say it that way.
Is that an every year, $2,700? I'm guessing?
It's in their contract.
Okay, so it is, it, every year he'll make 1609 in effect, in, in actuality.
1639.
1639, but then, they're, they don't have a contract after this year, so that would be, that, that would be looking for the next contract.
So if he, if he agreed to 1639, but then that 2,700 is taken out of the contract next year, is that a problem?
Yes. You let salary in there.
I would think, you, you probably, you told a guy he had to reduce his salary, right, Dave?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking up that 2,700 while we're speaking. I'm sorry. Find it real quick, but yeah, that sounds like a problem if you gave them a different number.
I think it's article 23, Dave.
Well, I'm in seven wages.
Maybe I was looking at it wrong. I'm thinking of another contract.
I think you are because it only goes up to 1901. Maintenance workers pay for maintenance employee shall be $2,700 per year in excess of the rate for custodian employees set in 7.02A or if employed after July 1, 1992, $2,700 per year in excess of the rate in 7.02B. And 702B is, um, that's at 1509. So you're saying that he was told a flat rate rather than given this exact formula?
Yes. Because it was calculated out at the time that the 1509 plus breaking the $2,700 down was an additional $1.30, so that was 1639.
The math is correct. That's not the problem.
The math is correct. Yeah, the problem is.
Isn't he, Mr. Botonic, isn't he still paid 1639 an hour? Like, he is still paid that because we don't give him the $2,700 in the lump sum, correct?
I don't know when you give it to him.
I, I don't know the exact wording, what was said in, in the, uh, in the interview process, but the, the 1639 was out there with the addition of the $2,700 is how I, how I took it when I was sitting there.
So that doubles up on it.
Did you say both, Jason? He got the 2,700 plus 1639?
I don't think Mr. Mizwell had mentioned anything about the $2,700, did he, Polakowski?
Um, I could be wrong. I know that it was mentioned to the first gentleman and the third gentleman, maybe that wasn't said, but I know, you know, I, I was thinking along, along the lines of 1639 plus that 2,700. I mean, I don't want to see the district pay more money than we have to, but that, that's how I took it when I was sitting there.
Well, that's different than what's in that contract that Dave read. Does the 1509 number is in there?
Well, I, you know, it looks like that should be straightened up.
I mean, we, we, uh, put it for a vote, get a first and a second, and then, uh, you know, somebody can make a phone call.
Calling first thing in the morning.
It's 10 o'clock at night.
Can we approve this based on that salary and if there's a problem with the gentleman accepting it for that salary, then we'll be back to square one.
Yeah, that's what I say at the beginning.
All right.
You should phrase it correctly. Uh, so that would be 1509 per hour plus $2,700.
Annually.
Annually.
For a salary of. Or, so I'd like to make a motion that we hire this person for an hourly wage.
for an hourly wage of fifteen oh nine based on the contract with an additional twenty-seven hundred dollars per year, which equates to a hourly salary of sixteen dollars and thirty-nine cents per hour.
Well, it currently equates to that. We don't know what the next contract would provide. That's the problem.
Well, I, I mean, that's the current. I mean, I can only go by the current.
I, I think, I think maybe you want to put a time limit on, on him to accept it, just to make sure that there's, you know, this doesn't drag on. Because you have another meeting next, uh, Thursday, so, you know.
Yeah, we should know by next week.
He accepts it by.
I would like him to accept it by the twenty-fourth. That would give us time. If he doesn't accept it, we can put forth another candidate. That Jason, do you think that's okay? Or would you like more time?
Yeah, that's more time. I, I don't, yeah. I mean, we only had two candidates, so I mean.
Okay.
What's the second candidate look like?
I don't think that's a fair question to ask him.
Well, I'm just asking, would you hire him or wouldn't you hire?
I, I don't think we should discuss.
I think that's a question for executive session. But, Jason, how about if we put, um, the twenty-third on there? That would give them the weekend and Monday. You know, following.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm good.
Amy, are you okay with this? You were on that committee.
Yes, I'm okay with it.
Okay. Mr. Beistall, you're also on that committee. You were okay with this? And I think you're frozen. He's frozen. Okay. Oh, I think he's back. All right, we had a motion by, uh, Michelle. Do we have a second? I need a second on this.
I'll make a second.
Any more discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Dr. Fike?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
All right, um.
We had two.
One thing real quick. Go ahead.
Mrs. Rhodes, Mrs. Uh, as far as, we didn't put on, there were two other items for personnel, correct?
Um, yeah, those were walk-ons, I believe.
Yes.
Well, I wasn't going to, uh, uh, you know, uh, ask for adjournment yet, so yeah, let, let's go ahead and do the walk-ons and then I'll have my last, uh, what I wanted to talk about the committees. Don't let me forget.
Well, do I have permission to walk those on or, or?
Please, please do, yes.
Yes.
Board is asked to, uh, approve Dwayne Huffman as a volunteer assistant coach for the boys soccer team at the recommendation of Jeff Schaefer.
I'll make that motion. Williams?
Second.
Carson, second.
Any discussion on this?
Can't approve? Is heavy, I mean, uh, is all his stuff on record?
We have all.
His clearance and stuff?
Yes, sir.
Roll call please.
Mrs. Kristen Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall? Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Dr. Fike?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
Go ahead, Mr. Mercer.
The board is asked to accept with regrets the resignation of Kristy Burke effective July first twenty.
I need a motion, please.
I'll make that motion and thank her for everything she's done for the school and we'll miss her.
Yes, that, that is well articulated.
I'll second that, Mr. Polakowski.
Roll call please.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Beistall?
Yes.
Mr. Carson?
Yes.
Dr. Fike?
Yes.
Mrs. Love?
Yes, with regrets and wish her the best of luck.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes, with regrets and I also echo Mrs. Love, um, best of luck to your future. Thank you so much.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, one absent.
Okay, before we adjourn, um, I just wanted to go over the, um, finally, the committees and, um, who would be on each committee. So for the first committee, which would be building and grounds and safety of, of students, that committee would comprise, um, Mr. Polakowski, Mr. Beistall and Mr. Carson. And I'll email this to everybody, so you don't have to try to write everything down. I'll email it to you tomorrow. Uh, the next one would be, uh, finance and district operations. That would be, um, Dr. Fike, Mrs. Love and myself. Next, uh, committee would be personnel and policy. That would be Mrs. Kristy Smith, uh, Mr. Carson and myself. Next would be, uh, academic, non-academic. That would be Mrs. Williams. That would be Mr. Carson and that would be Mrs. Love. And the last one would be transportation, um, athletics, extracurriculars. That would be Mr. Beistall, Mr. Polakowski and Mrs. Heather Smith. Uh, like I said, I will email these all to everybody tomorrow. Hopefully I can be able to do that. Bear with me though.
Mrs. Rhodes, would you repeat that last one? I was frozen again and didn't hear what you said. I'm sorry.
It's okay. Transportation, athletics, extracurriculars. Mr. Beistall, Mr. Polakowski and, uh, Mrs. Heather Smith. All right, um, Peggy, do we have any citizens' comments?
No.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. However, nobody go anywhere. Uh, we'll just make sure that the, uh, Mr. Friskar, uh, has, um, ended the recording and then we will go into an executive session. Uh, however, between the two, we're gonna take a five-minute break. So I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So be it, Mr. Beistall.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor of, uh, adjournment, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Back the home.
All right.
Kitchen, there's.
You are adjourned.
Very next door.
Public meeting is now adjourned, so Mr.